Okay. Okay. Preparing everyone, it's nine o'clock, March the tenth, twenty twenty five, and our regular Commissioners' Court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is roll call by our county clerk, Mary Jane Levafon, Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Judge Rasmell?
Present.
Commissioner Moya?
Present.
Commissioner Morales?
Present.
Commissioner Solis?
Present.
Commissioner Garza.
Present.
We have a quorum, Judge.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Next item is our invocation by Dr. Roger Mitter, Commissioners' Court chaplain. Dr. Mitter, good to see you again.
Good morning.
Morning.
Let's begin this morning by our heads, please. Let's pray. Our Father, give wisdom to those who ask. We're reminded today of the words found in Proverbs fifteen, twenty one, twenty two, which says, plans fail for lack of counsel, but with many advisors they succeed. Your word again provides for us the answers for our present needs. So we approach today this assembly believing that as we trust in your guidance and seek your wisdom, our greatest needs in this county and in our lives will be met. So Father, we ask for a special enabling for our leaders to govern the people of this county. May our leaders govern with justice and also mercy, strength and compassion, and with boldness and also humility. May they be granted the ability to receive your counsel and then to apply it to the needs before them today as they prepare themselves. Prepare our judge, our commissioners, as they fully realize the responsibilities which they shoulder and also from where their strength comes to handle these responsibilities. And in the name of one, and the one who has come, and the one who is coming again, in Christ's name we pray this today. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, Commissioners' communication, had a video weekend this.
Another county clerk, the folks did.
Certainly, yes. The weather was cooperative except for the wind.
The wind. We had heavy winds on Thursday and Saturday, which made it a little fun out there, you know, we got to eat the, you know.
So the bit of dirt.
It was good. Overall, it was a great day.
Yeah, I think the turnout was very good, yes.
I think so. The parade was also very nice, yeah.
Yeah, parade, had good weather for that.
It's definitely good.
Certainly want to thank all the volunteers and parents and kids that, you know, make this a really special yearly event for us.
All the vendors, all the buyers and stuff.
Yes.
Thank you for going out there.
I think the auction went well. I don't have total, maybe the commissioner may have some.
We said a little over five hundred thousand, so.
Very well, that's very good.
We should have a total hopefully by the end of the day today.
But it was certainly.
It was very, thanks for all the support for everyone that was out there. Also, the Comisiada, the one that competed in.
Oh, yeah, Chris Talilla, she got first in the Las Vegas mariachi extravaganza, so, salute to her and her book.
How old is she? What is she?
She's twelve, going on thirteen or thirteen years in middle school.
Yes, and so she middle schools mariachi player.
So she competed in San Antonio with, I don't know how many, how many kids, and she placed first in San Antonio. And she made it, she was the only one from middle school to make it to the Las Vegas.
Well, we have a lot of talent in our community, so congratulations to her. Maybe we can do a special presentation for her.
Sure.
I had a pass for.
Thank you. All right, very good, yes.
And also just a special thanks to other Commissioners and Mr. Martín for allowing two of his operators to come and clean up the royal, the project.
I saw that, yeah. I think it's ready for construction, yeah.
Four days to clear it all out.
I've seen it, looks really nice, and so the contractors shouldn't have any problem getting in there and finishing that project. I think there's.
They just need to do like the subgrading and the marking of the, you know.
Yeah, we'll have the engineer.
Property lines and stuff.
I think I also want to, you mentioned the vendors and the buyers here. A lot of those projects end up, you know, we, a lot of them were donated to the Sacred Heart.
To the Sacred Heart.
So I've got the list of projects and certainly, many thanks to the buyers for doing that.
Yes.
I think all the rooster rabbits, the chickens, turkeys, and then I think there were some large products, you know, the steers and goats and hogs. So it's a very good cause.
Yeah.
I know IBC also donates everything that they buy. I think they donate it all to the Sacred Heart.
So that's, of course, are very thankful for that donation. So yes, it's a good weekend. Weekend, any other communications, Commissioner? We'll move on to public comment. The section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioners' Court on any item on the agenda. Any members of the public at this time would not, we'll move on to our approval of item number six, the pool of invoices. And in your package, Commissioner, we had invoices from February the twenty first, twenty twenty five, through March the fifth, twenty twenty five. And for a total of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-nine cents. Motion to approve presented by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Moya. Any discussion, although in favor or against?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seven, the pool of purchase report. Commissioner Salina provided us with his monthly report of the county finances. Page one has the investment pool CDs and beginning balance of twelve million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. We had interest generated of forty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and twelve cents for the month. And for the year-to-date, we garnered three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. So we still haven't, that tax pool, which holds most of our tax revenues, we still haven't begun drawing on it. So after almost six months in, I think we'll be okay for the remainder of the year. Moving on to page two, the fiduciary demand accounts, which includes our operating accounts, the general fund, special water and bridge, waterworks, and other accounts that the county relies on. We had a beginning balance of two million, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, dollars, fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. We had revenues and deposits of nine million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, which, five million of it was from the pooled cash, which is our tax revenues. Expenses of nine million, eight hundred and seventy dollars, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents for an ending balance of two million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-three cents. So five million of those was transferred to a interest-bearing account. Continuing with our fiduciary demand accounts, on page three, we had a beginning balance of four million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents. Revenues and deposits of one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Expenses of three million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifteen cents for an ending balance of two million, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, eight hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-one cents. And the major transfer there, of course, is the tax collector's account, where she transferred most of all the taxing entities, the county and the school district. And there was transfers of three million, seven hundred and nine dollars, five hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-six cents from that account. Moving on to our energy usage for the month, for the month of February, our tax, our energy use was sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and three dollars and eighty-four cents. And our water usage for the month of February was six thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. And that's all the county meters. We've got a royalty account, which is royalties that the county received from several gas wells around the townsite for the month of February. It went up from January to four thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents.
It'll take it.
Yeah, it went up really good. Moving on to page six, which is our rents from our county buildings. County National Center, we received four hundred and thirty-six dollars in rental. Pavilion, eight hundred and fifty dollars in rentals. The committee center, the public committee center, received two thousand in rentals. Moving on to page seven, which is our monthly revenues from the different departments. County clerk, Fund Ten, for the month of February, brought in five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. The county clerk brought in Fund Fifteen, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. District clerk, Fund Ten, eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and seventy cents. The district clerk, Fund Fifteen, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We have had no armed ordinance permitting as of yet. And our sales tax for the month of February was two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety cents, which is, we still have very active economy going on, which is good news. Last deal for the month of January, February, I guess we're not posted at the time of the report. The jail brought in one hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-two cents for the month of February. Jail telephone, six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight and fourteen cents. Jail bond fees, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Jail office fees, fifteen hundred dollars. N R E M S for the month of February collected one hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and nine cents. They've been pretty busy, and that kind of, that puts them at a hundred percent of their budgeted revenues, I think. Well, I think, I think we budgeted seven hundred and some five and four. So I think it might be a mistake on the, this report hasn't been updated. Commissioner, I'll be updated in a moment.
Okay.
I think we budgeted, not actually for the record, just.
We should reach an agreement.
Yeah.
You still have about six active months, and they'll be way above the hundred percent anyways.
Yes. Just to make sure. Yes, the emergency medical services, we budgeted nine hundred thousand in revenues. So, but they're well underway. They're up to six hundred thousand. I'll let the treasurer's office know to update that.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to page nine, our J P's income revenue for the month of February, J P precinct one, fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. J P precinct two, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-two cents. J P precinct three brought in revenues of three thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and eight cents. And J P precinct four brought in two thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. And the last page has the revenues for shore and water services for the county, waterworks. And their total for the month of February was five hundred and eight thousand, sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
Motion to approve presented by Commissioner Solis.
Motion by Commissioner Solis to approve the credit report presented, seconded by Commissioner Garza. Any discussion, although in favor or against?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eight is the pool of checks issued. In your package, we had checks from February twenty first, twenty twenty five, through March the fifth, twenty twenty five, for a total of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, as presented by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Garza, although in favor or against?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number nine is tax collector's departmental report. Kate Vandossa, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Board Commissioners.
Morning.
Let me go ahead and help you.
Okay.
Okay, for the month of February, our collection report consists of general fund, a total of three hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight and thirty-eight dot cents, with refunds of three thousand, five hundred and fifteen ninety-seven. And the interest and sinking, we collected a hundred and twenty-two thousand, forty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents, with a six hundred and twenty-two ninety-five refunds. Farm to market, a hundred and fifty dollars and forty-six cents. Refunds, ninety-four cents. Special road and bridge, forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight thirty-four. Refunds, four hundred and eighty-six forty-nine. Domicile attorneys, fifteen thousand, six forty-six fourteen. Other fees and collections, we had hotel motel tax, five thousand, sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Tax certificates, four dollars. Copies and faxes, sixty-one dollars. And interest earnings, eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Tax sale, forty dollars. Our total net collection was four hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Okay, the domicile attorneys, our check issued to, to the treasurer will be four hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven seventy-one. Since we had a short week, we kind of rushed through the process. So we'll be issuing the check out to the county treasurer today. Here's the date on the hotel motel is at thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight, ninety, thirty-three thousand, nine forty-eight, forty-two, which is, is it low?
I know. Well, five months in, yeah, we're going to struggle to hit the hundred thousand every Monday.
Hopefully, we get there.
Okay.
And our collection rate is at seventy-nine point ninety percent. We did drop down a little, but hopefully we'll, we'll get back up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, before we get to the action items, I see Dr. Sanchez here. We'll try to get to some resolutions or proclamations. Item number twenty-seven is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it's requested by Dr. Selena Sanchez, executive director, Children's Advocacy Center. I know y'all are very busy. Dr. Sanchez said we'll get to it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, for the record, Dr. Selena Sanchez, executive director, Children's Advocacy Center, for the regular. I'd like to, before we get started, I would like to introduce you to your Zapata staff, because they are yours.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, are assigned to Zapata. And we have a friend here, Big Kim. He is a friend of the Children's Advocacy Center, from Laredo, and he is today. We are here to let you know that April is celebrated as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And it is to raise awareness and focus on our greatest assets, and that is our children. The mission statement of the Children's Advocacy Center is to break the cycle of child abuse through community education, training, and prevention. And to allow the child the opportunities for healing through intervention in a child-sensitive environment. We strive to provide justice and healing for children. And this is for not only West County, but Zapata County and any child in our surrounding areas. We do not discriminate, just like you do not discriminate when it comes to children. I do want to let you know that in Zapata, we have the following cases that have come to us. This is not a reflection of what happens in Zapata County. This is a reflection of what is brought to us. We have had representatives from the sheriff's office and the school district to five multidisciplinary team meetings, which are held every Thursday at two o'clock. At that point, the cases come forth, and different partner agencies will sit in and listen, and they make the determination what should the perpetrator be gone to and arrested? Or do we need to give the child the therapy? And this is where we come in when it comes to therapy. And we have had nine children from Zapata for forensic interviews. I know other cases happen in Zapata, and I think it's seen through P. Gasta, I am not sure. So I don't have those numbers. But we're here to ask you to proclaim April as Abuse, Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I just want to introduce very proudly to you, because you'll see us here, especially some folks here, and like I said, these are Zapata folks. And we already have met with Sheriff at one desk, and since the very beginning, I tracked him. So I would like to ask, our clinical director, he is, he is your therapist, but he got a promotion. He's now our clinical director, and there's a shift there.
So I just wanted to give some updates for the past year. So we've provided therapy services to fourteen individuals here, it's about the last calendar year, ten children and four adults. It's totaled about a hundred and seventy therapy hours that we've conducted. So like Dr. Sanchez mentioned, I'm kind of shifting roles. Right now, I currently only see three clients from Zapata, one adult and two children. I'm still going to be coming every week to finish off my caseload, but I'm wanting to introduce our newest therapist, that's also going to be coming and joining on, and she's going to be coming every week, Brenda.
Hi, my name is Brenda Ketero, and I'll be coming in once a week to see clients here in Zapata.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
I have the Ollica.
Yes.
Hi, good morning. So my name is Ollica Botes, and I'm the forensic interviewer that comes with Edwin, like, when it's needed. I know that we've only done nine, which, that's a lot, but I know we also see other forensic interviewers in Laredo. That's where the family wants to travel.
Right.
And, you know, it's at this discretion that they want to go to Laredo. And in the summer, they're instead of like here. And it's understandable. So I just wanted to really thank you for providing that place where we can do our forensic interviews, and so we can have our children from Zapata interviewed, and they feel comfortable there. But aside from just thanking you for the place, for the place that you provide us, I also want to thank you because, for allowing us, you know, to come every time. And for you, because of that, you, we know that you care, you know, this community cares for the children. And we're going to continue to do it, as long as we have the place and that we have the money to come and travel. So thank you so much.
We're so fortunate. And Dr. Sanchez, this is how many years that you've had a physical presence here in?
Forensic interview is two thousand and twenty-one, but I know that councilman has been more.
Before, yes.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, I remember, yes, when he opposed the possibility of having some space. And if that was just a small contribution that the county Commissioners could do, we're very fortunate to have you present here.
And more than anything, we didn't want the children to miss school. Because what was happening is that they had to leave the classroom and drive an hour, and of course, you know, go to our therapy.
It is difficult for, you know, we're thankful for every agency that has a presence here in our community, and that's why the court, we try to provide all the help we can, because it's very difficult for our citizens to travel, you know, a hundred mile round trip to get these services elsewhere. So it's very important to have you all here, and we thank you.
And I'm more than sure that they feel more comfortable being here in Zapata than traveling to.
I, most of the time, I think sometimes the parents don't want the cars to be seen outside. So that's the beauty of it. There's like an entrance through the back, and then one of the portals. And just so you can know, we wrote a grant at Rents, and that's how we were able to furnish the forensic interview classroom, if you will. And we also were able to get equipment for the, for the therapy. So thank you. I think you have a proclamation.
Yes.
Will the Commissioner sign on that?
Sure.
And I'll go ahead and read it.
Please, please.
Proclamation, whereas as of nineteen ninety-seven, about fourteen thousand, sixty children between the ages of two through seventeen have been reportedly victimized and all-time re-victimized by unimaginable sexual, physical, and/or emotional abuse. Whereas in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, approximately three hundred and forty child victims received Children's Advocacy Center of Laredo, West County. Nine point seven percent were ages zero through five. Forty-three point five percent were ages six through twelve. Forty-six point five percent were ages thirteen to seventeen, and point three percent were individuals eighteen and over with disabilities. And whereas twenty-three percent of victims were male, and seventy-seven percent of victims were female. Whereas research indicates that for any one child that occurs to abuse, there are ten still silent. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility, and finding solutions depend on involvement among all people. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote and support programs that benefit children and their families. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of the partnerships among a variety of entities, including but not limited to schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, child protective services, prosecution agencies, medical professionals, mental health professionals, children advocacy centers, and other community-based nonprofit organizations. And whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention, and consider helping parents raise their children in safe nurturing environments, as well as supporting local professionals dedicated to meeting the needs of child abuse victims. Now therefore, I, Judge Joe Rasmell, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the state of Texas as Zapata County Judge, and on behalf of the Zapata County Commissioners' Court, do here proclaim the month of April, twenty twenty-five, as Child Abuse and Neglect Awareness and Prevention Month. In Zapata County, and urge all citizens to work together to reduce child abuse and neglect, and to significantly improve the response of our community when child abuse occurs in the months and years ahead. Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and sign it.
Can we take a picture?
Yes.
With the Commissioners' Court? And just to let you know that in April, we will be coming, if it's okay with you all. We normally put blue pinwheels outside, and the blue is the significance of the bruises that the children get from physical abuse. So if you see blue pinwheels, that was here.
Well, thank you for the gift, too. The pen, and thank you for the small gifts. Want to take a picture? And would they expect a motion to approve the proclamation?
No.
Yes.
I think motion to proclaimation for child abuse prevention month.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Morales to approve the proclamation declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Any discussion, although in favor or against?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Mr. Vero, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
For a picture, Mr. Vero.
Yeah, sure.
Chair.
No, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I hope you like.
I know.
I know it's cold here. It's not, it's open up a bit for us.
Yes.
Yes.
Chris, yes.
Carrie, can you?
Yes.
Congratulations. You're ready?
No.
I may be from Laredo, but actually I'm from the governor's office, Child Sex Traffic Department. So this is one of my counties as well.
Appreciate that, yes. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to great see you. Okay, thank you. Since we're ready for action items, Commissioners, we will deliberate and consider action. Becky, the parents from the library asked me if they have a train and a pen, so please bring her items to the front. So it'll be item number seventeen, Commissioners, to approve the use of Zapata Community Center for a Dr. Sue's Community Health Care. Good morning, Ms. Becky.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, actually, it's an invitation, because you already had approved it.
Yes.
So it's an invitation for the community to come over to the Dr. Sue's Annual Health Care. We're going to have door prizes, and we're going to have ladies, young kids dancing, and I have more than twenty-two booths of different, from Laredo, the valley, maybe heaven, to show up.
And the date again is?
On Monday, March seventeenth, for quarter seven, at the Zapata County Community Center.
March seventh, open to the public, now the public.
Open to the public, yes, sir.
And I know you haven't heard our announcement this morning.
Yes, I do. I have very good news. Okay, it is my pleasure to inform you that the J. Frank Dobie Trust Grant Selection Committee has chosen the Olcarita de Rosa Zapata County Public Library to receive a twenty twenty-five grant of seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents to purchase some books, sir.
Good job. I thank, thank your staff for making that grant application.
Yes, I will, sir.
They got over here, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
So on this one, it's just no action, just an announcement.
Yes, an announcement.
Okay, just an announcement. And we'll move on to item number eighteen. Is, it's also concerning the library is to approve estimates for the repairs of Zapata County Library. I did a walkthrough with, with Ms. Becky who gave us, uh, last week on, on some of the, I mean, it's an older building, we all know. They keep it in, in really tip-top shape. It's, uh, you go in there and it's a very welcoming, uh, building, uh, libraries. Uh, so I, 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 uh, I respect the job you're, you and your staff do by keeping that older building alive, yes, and, and working well. Uh, but there are some needs, Commissioners, in the bathrooms especially, and, and I think the meeting room, uh, has, uh, is outdated.
See, we're gonna pay, they're gonna pay the, the labor that Mr. Sanchez proposed is four thousand two hundred and in materials is not gonna be more than a thousand eight hundred.
She, she did, uh, go out, uh, for ticket, for procurement, the different bids, uh, Commissioners, and this would be, I guess, the, the one that was the most reasonable?
The most reasonable. The two of them were.
Were a little higher, yes. And who will be the contractor?
Uh, Mr. Sanchez.
Ramiro, right? I think it's, I read that's what it said on the.
Yes.
Okay, Ramiro Sanchez.
Yes, Ramiro Sanchez.
And so he'll be, uh, repair both restrooms by replacing all the valves in the toilets and we also replacing the valve on the sinks.
Yeah.
Remove all wallpaper trimmings in the restroom, remove all the floor trimmings around the restrooms, hallway and meeting room, and replacing that with new wood trimming.
Yes.
Cover all holes in the wall, we have holes in the wall?
Yes.
In, in the hallway, restrooms and meeting room, and then paint all the hallway, restrooms and the meeting room. So we paint for, for the restroom. So when you say the valves, you're not, the actual fixtures, you're not gonna replace the fixtures?
Yeah, the fixtures and everything.
But not the sinks or the toilet?
No.
Those are still good?
They're still good, sir.
Okay. And this will be from Land Department? Yes, sure. How much do we expect out of Land Department?
Well, I think we have a.
Does I make a motion to approve, uh, five thousand ninety-three with eleven cents? Contractor will be Ramiro Sanchez. Contract labor will be forty-two hundred. Material will be seventeen-eighty-three with eleven cents to Dr. Sanchez. Motion by Commissioner, so these seconded by Commissioner Morales to approve the estimate for repairs, uh, to the library of, uh, uh, total repair is, uh, five thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and eleven cents, including labor and material. Although in favor is the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Becky. So you'll, uh, take care of that and inform the court as, as reconstruction progress.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Pictures before and after?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right.
Judge, we didn't have, we didn't have an action on number seventeen for the approval of the.
There was no action.
Okay, just making sure, okay.
An invitation.
All right.
All right, we'll start it, move on to more action items. Number ten is to approve estimate, uh, from RDO equipment for the repair of a road and bridge loader. Commissioner, I think that, that road and bridge loader, of course, that loader is a large piece of equipment that we've had for many, many years. Uh, I, I think it was non-functioning or it was not moving or in danger of, it's a reticulating, uh, uh, lower and where the pins were.
Returns it back, take out and the pin was loose.
Yes, so it was, it was a danger to the operator. So we stopped using it. So the repairs, uh, I think that nothing's cheap on, on those, that type of equipment. Um, I think it was, ended up being four thousand? Four thousand thirty-six for the forty-eight cents. Uh, have, have we inspected the, the, the loader, Commissioners? Do you know if it's working? If they repaired it?
I have not. It's like the second time I hear of it, but. So this is not, it, this is pretty much like an invoice, right? It's already done the work?
I think they've already done the work, yes.
Was this the one that, that Rafa has or is that the one at the landfill?
No, the one at the.
That Rafa has.
Yeah. Also from Land, Land Department, Judge?
Uh, but I don't think the work has been done yet, correct?
I'm not sure.
It says here the segment dates.
Are we gonna prove it either or?
Yeah.
If, if it says not.
Two-five to two-fourteen, but if you go to the page.
Cause it says it's not an invoice, so I think it's just an estimate?
So do you want to approve the estimate? I would think you would. Total of four thousand thirty-six for forty-eight cents. We need to leave that equipment. Motion by Commissioner Solis to approve the estimate presented to, uh, repair the, the loader. And seconded by Commissioner Morales. Any discussion? Although in favor is the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Just for the record, Judge, uh, the parts will be four thousand eight hundred and two for seventy-seven cents. Labor will be seven thousand thirty-three for seven, uh, seventy-one cents. I think they have to take the whole machine apart.
Yeah, yeah, the main, the main.
Item number eleven is to approve payment for the repairs of the mechanic's truck of road and bridge. So I think there was, uh, there's a Ford truck that, uh, got ripped out. I think that one's been repaired, I believe. Information I got. So the mechanic's truck, I think it had some problems with, uh.
Yeah, it was five thousand one hundred and forty-five.
Yeah. I think, uh, the, the issue is where do we pay it from?
Judge, I was looking, they have been repairing the maintenance on their budget. They have nine thousand and ninety-seven and fifteen cents. Uh, I would say they pay it out of there and then if they do over budget, of course, we can always come back and, and do them.
That'll work.
You know, what's going on?
All right, motion by mature Moya to, uh, pay out of the, is it the shop?
The shop. Well, yeah, it's gonna be zero-one-five dash six-twenty-one dash forty-two sixty-two zero. Oh, correction, forty-three four-thirty on repairs and maintenance.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Moya to repair out of line item from the road and bridge, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion? Although in favor is the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twelve is to approve payment of invoice number two for grant work for administrative milestone number two for CFC twenty-one dash zero-one-nine-one Zapata, towards the Lonia project. Uh, so I think this is a, uh, for the grant administration aspect, Commissioner.
This is for sixty-three hundred dollars?
Number six thousand. Six thousand three hundred with remaining balance of fifteen thousand seven. Correct. Motion to approve it. Motion to approve invoice number two for six thousand three hundred. Six thousand three hundred by Commissioner Solis to grant works. Seconded by Commissioner Moya. Any discussion? Although in favor is the eye?
Aye.
We have a remaining balance mismerging of fifteen thousand seven. Item number thirteen is to approve the scope of services with SES engineers for the survey and remaining capacity study of the financial landfill. I was talking with, uh, Mr. Times, uh, so our, uh, the original cells are at ground level, they're about to be full.
Yes, sir.
We do have a, uh, permit to allow, uh, more debris and trash to, to go up. At substantially, I think it's, it'll, uh, about.
I think it's gonna hold us for, it depends.
Ten to fifteen years, I think.
It depends, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna say a year or two because we, we never know.
But it, it's substantial, the amount of, of trash we can go above the, the ground level. But it does require, uh, surveying, uh, and, uh, staking.
Yes, sir.
And SES engineers, which are, have been doing the landfill, uh, engineering for many, many years. And do other landfills, I think that's what they specialize in.
Oh, yes, sir, yeah.
Uh, they, they provide a quote, uh, to, to with designs to be able to do that work. And I, I told Martin, well, let's get on that before we, we, we'll be ready. If, if, when the landfill, when our, our site, if the cell is full at the ground level, we'll be ready that we can keep on going higher on it.
That's thirty-eight thousand.
There's no way around this, yes.
There's no way around that and, uh, in the, in the, um.
This will be out of consulting?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll take a motion to approve it thirty-eight thousand.
Motion by Commissioner Moya to, uh, approve a payment of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred for all the work needed, uh, to SES engineering, uh, for, uh, so, so this will be, uh, to, the type one area will soon shift to above grade filling, uh, for the remainder of the landfill operation. So, uh, this, they will guide us as to how we, we proceed.
Yes, sir.
Uh, with the trash buildup and, and the cover that it would be necessary. Seconded that motion. Yes. Also, there's, uh, four task descriptions, Judge. Okay. Uh, the first one is gonna be the field investigation of top, uh, of waste in oil field area. That'll be twenty thousand four hundred. Uh, task number two will be establish a hundred-foot grid for field staking, three thousand five hundred. Task number three, determine a remaining capacity inside life, five thousand dollars. And then the last one will be on call engineering and surveying, ten thousand dollars. Total of thirty-eight nine hundred. Yeah, so that'll be phases, Commissioners, that's a good, so that's a good motion there. And I think, as, as you know, the county has acquired substantial property around the landfill. And we'll be working on a, a, a future, uh, extension of that landfill.
Yeah, yes, they, um, we're doing that as they.
At the same time?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So we'll have both options here.
I'll let you know.
Now that we're in this to- topic, Judge, are we on the, the landfill that was here and the upstairs of?
The next item is.
The next item, okay.
Okay. So we've got a motion, uh, and I guess the phase will be as a tennis each, each project. Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Moya? Moya?
Moya?
Yes.
Uh, although in favor is the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And yeah, this will be out of consulting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Well, you've got the next one too?
Yes.
Number fourteen is to award dig, uh, for the surface cleaning of the Zapata, old Zapata landfill, which is site number, which, uh?
Uh, it's, it, it, it's site number one-five-three-six, I guess, yeah.
One-five-three-six, okay. Which is the, the original landfill.
Yeah.
About three miles north of Zapata.
Yes, sir.
So we need, we need additional ground cover.
Yes.
And the court had agreed to, uh, make arrangements with the adjacent landowner to possibly use some of his, uh, soil and, and, uh, and we bid it out?
Yes, sir, and, uh, and Mr. Yara was the one that was, was the, was the, um, the only, the only person, the only.
Only bid, the only bid came out?
Yeah.
I make a motion to, uh, to obtain to hard readyments, uh, for the surface clean Zapata County landfill as per TCU standards in the amount of sixty-two thousand dollars. Okay. Motion by Commissioner, uh, so need seconded by Commissioner? Moya? Uh, and so what was the bid for? It was sixty-two thousand.
Sixty-two thousand. You guys want for a breakdown, like, you know?
Uh, how many days did they give you on this post?
Uh, and.
I want to make sure that it's dated back in December twenty-four.
What do you mean?
Like if the, it's gonna stand?
Original bid that they took in was twelve-two twenty-four.
Yeah.
Did you talk to him?
Yeah, I did. Everything's okay, yeah.
And, and the reason we didn't, uh, move on it at the time, there, there was a, some discussion of possibly, uh, the county, uh, cleaning out, uh, I guess, that, uh, little pond, uh, by the, by the library and using some of that soil, but I don't think that's, uh, feasible. I think TCU will, that allows to, to transfer that. So that was the debate and why we didn't award it. We, we wanted to make sure that if there's a possibility that we could do it ourselves with, with that soil, but it's, it's not possible.
Yeah, no, you know, I'm asking.
Okay, things go on.
They gave you a quote and it says it's only good for thirty days or something.
I talked to him already, so.
That's cool.
Okay, it's okay.
Okay.
Are we okay with the landowner on, on the adjacent side?
We have made arrangements with him.
I know they had requested like an entrance or something.
Yes, so there's, there's.
Everything's included with that.
The agreement.
Everything's okay.
Yeah, they, we need to improve their entrance.
Yeah, but it's included with the, with the estimate and everything.
Yes.
Yes, that's included.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion is second, although in favor is the eye?
Aye.
And for this, Commissioners, will come our fund balance. We did have this budgeted, uh, uh, so we will, uh, get that done because we do have a, a timetable on that too, that we do have some, uh, deadlines.
Yes, they, we have a, uh, a, a time limit, which is, uh, it's, we have it till May, yeah.
Yeah, so I'd like to ask Mr. Sanders to bring this to the court because we, we don't want to get close to the deadline.
Yeah.
And then have some fines, uh, thrown into it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Next one.
Yeah, we got one more. To hire, uh, Mr. Javier Amines on slot number seven as landfill operator at twelve dollars seventy-two cents an hour in the environmental department?
Yes, sir.
So he was on probation, right?
Yes, sir, yeah, yeah.
I, I understand you're doing well.
Oh, yes, sir.
He's doing great.
He's a very good operator.
He's one of the operators that helped us.
Yeah.
Very good, okay.
Motion to hire Javier Amines on slot number seven as landfill operator.
Thank you very much.
Twelve seventy-two, seventy-two an hour.
Very, very good. Motion by Commissioner Moya, seconded by Commissioner Morales, although in favor is the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yeah.
Item number sixteen is to approve the annual cybersecurity training offered by Texas Association of Comms as mandated by the Texas Department on Information Resources for fiscal year twenty-five. Ms. Becky, I guess you will make contact with all the.
Yes.
Departments, okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Morales, seconded by Commissioner Solis, although in favor is the eye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nineteen is to request the use of the outpost space at the Zapata County Pavilion for the ninth annual optimism awareness five K run, walk and pop-up market on Saturday, April the fifth, twenty twenty-five. Motion to approve by Commissioner Morales, seconded by Commissioner Gadsam, although in favor is the eye?
Aye.
Those are always very successful with the, the markets and the walks of pitch, pitch out and the, uh. Item number twenty, uh, to review and, and, and approve status for the booster station project and to approve invoices, Jones Alves. I think all has got a really good look out of the county fair, the booster station. It looks, looks good.
It, it's moving. It's, 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 what's the tank in there?
Air, air trucks attention.
Yes, we have the tank and we have the, um, the hydro tank as well. Both of those have been installed. The pump house is there as well. The, uh, electrical from the AEP has been brought down from the pole.
Okay, good.
To the property, so it's up to the property, uh, facility. Uh, we're painting the, uh, chemical feed system and the interior of the pump house, we need some piping to connect, um, the tanks together. At this, uh, meeting, it's just a report. I don't have an invoice for it, but I wanted to, you know, bring the reports to the court.
I guess you would say ninety percent or?
We're pretty close, yeah, like maybe, yeah, about ninety percent. So we're looking maybe at about another month, uh, hopefully by the end of this month, hopefully into a little bit into April, but not much further.
Good view, okay, good. Okay, so just no action.
No action on this one.
And then item, uh, number twenty-one is to review status on the drainage project, which is the same, uh, TDA grant, uh, the, the other half, yes.
Judging Commissioners, on this project, the, uh, the county was able to, uh, clear the site on the drainage channel. That's the drainage channel that's, uh, on sixteen. And when we're Fifth Street going north and going south, it's, I guess would also be Fifth Street. And, uh, I'm, I'm including one sheet of, of, set of plans. The, um, there is an encroachment into the county's right-of-way and it's pretty significant, about maybe twenty feet.
That barn?
Yes, that, that barn right there, it, it's, it's more or less like about twenty feet into the, into the property. We, we've, you know, we've moved the channel further east to try to avoid the barn. Uh, we may need them to move it a little bit so that we, we don't have to, uh, come back so far because we're getting off, um, where the, I guess, we gotta get back into the channel at the end. But, um, that's, that's the main thing. And then, uh, we want to give it graded and we'll, we'll go. We'll stick out the center line of the alignment for the panel and then we can grade it, give it a shape and then compact that.
When you say a barn is like an enclosed barn or?
No, it's a.
Just a structure?
I think it.
The, the roosters or?
Roof structure?
The one that brings under the fence?
Oh, okay, though, yeah, it's like a rooster house or something. It's like the fence thing.
So they, they probably, cause.
It was like that probably like from some time back and, and, uh, since it was all wooded there, it still wasn't really an issue. But now that we're needing to put in a complete channel through there, um.
Create an issue?
Yeah, it's a little bit of a, of an issue there. We, we can have them maybe move it a little bit. If it's, you know, if it's not, uh, I guess a prominent structure. If it's a prominent, I'll go take a look at it. It's just that.
This one is located exactly where the barn?
Oh, yeah, people are thinking.
Yeah.
The barn is, uh, where is the barn located at?
It's at the end of the point.
At the end of the point?
Yeah, like on Costa Rica?
Yes, on Costa, on the, on the Costa Rica street. So that street is county right-of-way. It should match up with, uh, Fifth Street. Uh, which is currently the channel. And, uh, that intersection there, it's maybe about eighteen, twenty feet into the, into the right-of-way, so.
Yeah, we'll have to move that so we can keep the area clean, yeah.
Yeah, so just that, that's the main thing that I, I, I saw on this one and, uh, we'll, we'll have that straightened out. The county did a really good job in cleaning it within four days, uh, you know, the job, Commissioners, and, uh, working together and getting that, um, I guess, uh, ready for, for this, uh.
So we've already awarded the contractor.
We've awarded the contract. We have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
And, uh, so that we can then authorize the contractor to begin, uh. First, first items are gonna start cleaning the channel itself, uh, under the cove, uh, sixteen.
Yeah.
And then there's some concrete to be installed there on the north and south side of the cove. And then that'll give us, uh, the county time to grade and compact the channel going south from Florida Street.
So what are we gonna do with, I guess Florida Street is the one that's kind of all the water back?
Yes, so we're, we're gonna, once we clean the cove, we will be able to determine how much lower the cove is from that street. Hopefully it's pretty different so that we can just cut it with some pipes and.
So the county will be. So the county will be responsible for that or the contractor?
No, that that'll be, um, right now we removed the 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 low water crossing.
So we're gonna, the county will have to remove the low water crossing?
If we wanna add it, if not, it'll just stay like that and.
Well, I I don't think we want ponding there.
I, yes, so I I think we should.
It won't cross, I'm I'm assuming it's anywhere between five feet difference. I mean, our our employees.
So that puddle is deep and it'll last there, so like, I mean, you're talking mosquitoes and it's not, it's not a big thing.
Yeah.
So it won't go over the road until it like levels up and then and then you'll have that water tank there for. Right, you're talking about the little cement?
Yes, right, right by the highway?
Yeah.
Yes, so where where Florida Street is, right north of it, there's a little, like, a little dip going down.
It's a cement, right?
So, once we clear out the covert, we'll be able to shoot the actual concrete and compare it to Florida Street. See if it's two feet, three feet, if it's three feet, I mean, that'd be great, cause we'll be able to cross with a pipe and the minimal, no, minimal work, we'll just suck at the concrete. Put a pipe and then concrete it back.
So the concrete channel will begin at Florida Street, right?
Florida Street going south.
Yeah, okay, so that that first section where the pool, where the ponding is, where there's not gonna be any concrete channel there?
Yeah, the first section.
No, there's not, there's none there, we just wanna, uh, avoid, uh, I guess, uh, ponding for mosquitoes and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to get to that, our guys can take care of that, that's not an issue, we have equipment to cut and stuff like that.
Okay.
To save us money.
For the over.
Well, it's, uh, caliche there, Caleray?
No, it's concrete.
It's con- it's concretey?
Yeah, we concreted it, uh, about fifteen years ago.
Oh.
I think it was, uh, yeah, it was a while back.
Yeah, it's just a grader for not there, I mean, it's it's just.
It was just, it was just eroded and created an oil, and so we concreted it so it could be a low water crossing, it has served as a low water crossing for fifty years it's been there. It's still, it's in shape, uh.
It's a, it's a natural dam.
It is, it is.
I'm pretty sure there's a lot of fish and and stuff in there.
Well, they 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 drained it out since, so they they've already pumped out the water.
Yeah.
But it it does hold back water and and I don't, you know, it does, you know, you couldn't really tell when it was over gone, but once we, once it was cleared, I was like, ooh, there's a little pond.
There was water there for a month or two.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it almost seems like, like, uh, it's gotta be a lot of clay to hold the water that long or.
I know there was a leak there before.
Maybe, I think he told some permission maybe.
Maybe, that's.
There's always water there.
There's always water there, so that's, uh, yeah, we'll have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow, tomorrow it gets started.
So no action on that one, Mary Jane? What time is that gonna be at? What time is that gonna be at?
Uh, it's gonna be ten, yes, or it's not?
All right, thank you, sir. We got some consent items, Commissioners?
Chonesales, do we have a date for the San Ignacio Water Plant, uh, full grant opening, cause we have had one new ceremony?
Okay, Mr. Action, so we can get a a rigging cutting.
Yeah, a rigging cutting, yes.
Yes, I'll get you that.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to approve, uh, consent item twenty four, uh, twenty one? Twenty four, yes.
Judge, on that one, I just have a question, uh, the last one, where it says veteran service, uh, is it two thirty one? Cause of, it's from two thirty one and it's to two, two thirty, so it's that.
I think on the on the request.
What's your line item?
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
It should probably be two thirty one.
So.
I don't know, it's two thirty or two thirty one.
So on the on the request form that's attached to it, it's two thirty one, four sixteen?
What the question?
Yeah, two thirty one, Sergeant.
Yeah, on this one?
Two thirty one, four fifteen, four three one, three six.
Okay, all right. Motion to approve.
Yeah, I think it's on this one, to me.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Morales to approve consent items, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to resolutions and proclamations, number twenty five is to renew the disaster declaration of local state of disaster related to the surge of migrants unlawfully causing into trans, onto Texas, Mexico border. Commissioners, well, this is part of the Operation All-Star requirement, uh, and I think the sheriff, uh, met with with the governor last week and, uh, he's committed to continue funding, uh, good morning, Sheriff.
That's, uh, good morning, Judge, Commissioner. That's correct, Judge, he said he was gonna fund us, you know, for years to come, so, uh, we just need to figure out.
How to, yeah, how to get, and we've got an item to address, how do we, uh, come into compliance, I guess would be the word, uh, that.
That passed the hurdle?
Yes.
And I'm gonna speak to Ryan Giendis later on this morning, I already said something with him, so.
And certainly, uh, with the trouble we've had, uh, counselor, with this grant, uh, and certainly if it was the the same administration that we were dealing with and the sheriff, I I would urge not to proceed forward with it, uh, and then we'll have some items on it, but I think we need to give the administration an opportunity to to do well and do good with this grant and continue our, uh, our, you know.
Yes, sir, we're being successful when we started, I think even Rodney said we were a hundred and fifty percent better than when they were in office and there was no stats. Now, as soon as we came in, Judge, and started working it, we had stats, so.
I understand.
You know, we need to move forward if possible, but.
Motion to approve Judge, uh, declaration of a local state of disaster related to surge of migrants unlawfully causing Texas border.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Moya, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and then item in return, since to approve the resolution in support of fiscal year twenty six, Operation All-Star. Motion to approve, yes, a resolution by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Moya, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so, uh, yeah, we'll, uh, you know, try to help you all, Sheriff, and get you, uh, the funding. And I know we had a very good meeting at the governor's office, uh, with with, uh, I I guess other sheriffs.
That's correct, yes, Judge, yes, so it was really successful and and again, we're, they're trying to work with us, but that's, I'm planning to make those phone calls this morning and see where we're at, and as far as the, uh, equipment, we're trying to find everything and we're almost there, Judge, but again, it's just, you know, they they shredded every single document, so there's nothing on the drawings or.
I don't get your point.
Tough transition, but we're trying as much as we can to.
I I I owe you very thankful, I would just put, uh, so thank, uh, the sheriff from Wake County for really kind of, Sheriff Quay has really been very helpful to to.
Yeah.
So appreciate the the teamwork that y'all have done.
And we're gonna continue that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do we need to sign the resolution, Moza? Do you have it?
Yeah, I have, yeah, sir.
It should be two.
Judge Alito, it's nice.
Judge Alito, make the motion to return to regular session.
I'll second that motion, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Solis to return to regular session. Seconded by Commissioner Ganza up to the record. No action was taken in executive session. Item number 23, discussion and take possible action on employee request for an extension of FMLAD.
Make a motion just for approval. Let the personal director make adjustments in accordance to Commissioner's support recommendations.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Moya, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion, although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 22 is compensation with attorney regarding Operation All-Star Funding Grant Number 4372601.
No action.
No action on item number 22.
Motion by Judge.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Moya, although the favor say aye.